Tell me when then, John.
Uh, I think we are, we are live now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Dean. Right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Police and Crime Panel on Thursday, the 18th of June. Um, this is interesting, it's online. Um, and we are, we are set for a really interesting meeting, looking at the agenda. Uh, the usual rules apply, please, to all people participating in the meeting. Can you keep your microphones muted if you are not speaking? Uh, and then if you, if you want to speak, obviously unmute your microphone, because we all have a good laugh when you speak and can't hear what you're saying. Um, if you are able to, please raise your hand electronically if you would like to speak. Uh, and I will monitor, monitor that at the side of the board and, and pick you up. Um, if you don't have the hand function, wave, but I can only see nine faces at any one time on this, and there are far more than nine people on, so it might necessitate you just shout out. So, so don't be embarrassed if I'm not listening to you or seeing you. Do shout out and we'll pick you up. Is everybody okay with that? Right, well, before we, Commissioner, before we start, the Police and Crime Panel would, would like to make a statement about recent events. Um, I'm going to read this statement out, Commissioner, and you're more than welcome to respond if you would like to. "The anger about the killing of George Floyd and its impact on our communities is felt by us all, as are the concerns and the anxieties of many following the release of Public Health England's report into the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on ethnic minority communities. In contemplating our duty as a police and crime panel, we remember a number of things. We remember the cultural change that has happened across the police service of England and Wales to eradicate institutionalised racism following the murder of Stephen Lawrence in 1993. We also remember the critical importance of training, of leadership, of peer challenge, in ensuring that a police officer's use of force in the course of their duties is always proportionate and lawful. We also remember our enshrined duty to challenge and tackle all aspects of discrimination and hate, as we remember as a panel our shared duty to protect those who are vulnerable and who are frightened. The final thing we remember is about the value of democracy in our society and the right to peaceful and lawful protest that is enshrined within our democracy. Commissioner, as a panel, it is our duty to focus on these fundamental priorities and to never assume that our work is done only by constantly supporting you, the Police and Crime Commissioner, to resolutely fight all aspects of discrimination and..."
But, um, it, on the paragraph where it says "in response to councillor Wally Higgins", um, I'd like to change that if possible or suggest the amendments to read. "In response to councillor Wally Higgins, the Police and Crime Commissioner advised that a separate COVID-19 emergency reserve of 0.5 million has been set aside, and the general reserve of £5 million could also be accessed in response to the COVID-19 outbreak if necessary." It's just clarification around that, um, use of that reserve and the value of it.
Yeah, well, what's four and a half million pound between friends?
Thank you.
Colleagues, do we all support that amendment? Thank you. John, can you please amend the minute to show the, the, the change figures?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Colleagues, page four. Page five. Page six of the minutes. And then page seven. Right, we'll go back and, and refer to one element. But is everybody happy for me to sign those minutes as a true and accurate record of the meeting? Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Right, can I just go back to page four and make a couple of comments? Uh, it is to note, really, that this panel, when we last met in March, which now seems like an, an age ago, um, we did recognise the element of COVID-19 and the challenges it is going to put on Warwickshire Police and indeed the wider community. Um, and what we will do, Commissioner, is when we come back to the closed session, we'd like to have a discussion with you about some of those challenges. Um, so, well done to Sarah and well done for Ian for having the foresight to predict where this was all going to go. Right. Members, um, anybody else ask anything on the minutes or matters arising before we move forward? No, thank you. Um, moving on to one four, which is public speaking. John, am I right in thinking we don't have any members of the public present and we had no questions submitted?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving into main agenda item number two then, which is the report of the Police and Crime Commissioner. Philip, can I hand over to you?
You can indeed, thank you, Mr Chairman. Um, I hope everybody's had a chance to read the report. It was sent out in pretty good time, so thank you, John, for that. Um, perhaps just to highlight one or two items, uh, for the benefit of, of the panel and maybe to initiate a, a discussion. So, the item two is the COVID-19 pandemic, plainly a huge issue for everybody on this call. Um, it, when we'd held the last meeting, we, it was just beginning to develop. And of course, we'd held the last meeting due to Pirda rules because of the election that was possibly going to take place in May of this year. That election was, uh, was cancelled. All, uh, public elections were, were, were cancelled or indeed postponed till May 2021. So I'm afraid you'd have to put up with me for another 12 months at least. And plainly, it's the same in local government and councillors in, in those areas like Nunnay, Bedworth, and rugby will be aware that, um, those elections will take place a year later. Um, we have produced a, a COVID-19 supplement to the Police and Crime Plan, prepared by Dave Patterson, uh, put a lot of effort and a lot of work into this. I don't think many PCCs nationally have done this, but we felt it was right that the, the plan should have an amendment and/or, or an addendum to, to see, you know, to look at our priorities during the pandemic. They're listed there on, on page, uh, one of my report. Uh, secure and effective police, hold the chief constable to account. Uh, community safety by bringing top partners and stakeholders, and the, uh, the statutory responsibilities, uh, to, to, to ensure an effective response by police. So I think that's common sense and a great thing to do. Um, our own office has operated pretty well. Uh, we have basically abandoned the office, other than those who wish to go in and sort out IT or pick up post and that sort of thing. So everyone's been working from home. Uh, we have weekly teams discussions, uh, with, with all the staff on. And in my view, the amount of, uh, correspondence coming to the office has gone up quite significantly. I suspect due to residents being at home more than out and about. Uh, and we've been able to keep up with that demand and respond to all those who are contacting the office. So I've been pleased with that. I've also been continuing my weekly meetings with the chief constable, sometimes virtually, sometimes in person. If, certainly I try and go in if we're getting a presentation on something or it's a big decision to be made, uh, but that has continued as well. So I think the process of the PCC office and our challenge to the force and the holding to account function has not been diminished over the last, well, 13 odd weeks. So I think that's good. Um, do you want to take questions in each section? Or would you like me to go through the whole report, Mr Chairman? You're muted. I think you're muted. Can't hear you, Dave. I think you're muted. Okay, um, you've now frozen on my screen. Um, okay, let's push on then. So, uh, can you hear me, everybody?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, good, I'm on then. I'm on, Dave. I don't know what's happened to Dave's IT, he's frozen and he's muted.
Back again, I'm sorry, the internet dropped out. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Uh, the question was, Dave, do you want me to take questions or comments after each section or go through the whole report?
If you go through the whole report, please, Philip. We've got four questions that we'll ask you at the end, which we've discussed in our pre-meet.
Fine, okay. We then move on to the subject of your, um, your, your, your statement at the beginning of the meeting, Black Lives Matter. Um, you'll see in the report I referred to Stephen Lawrence. Uh, we've supported the trust, which is about creating bursaries to, to undertake research in policing into, into black Asian and minority, uh, officers, and we're, we're, we're awarding scholarships for those to do that. I think that's a positive thing to do. And, uh, we indeed acknowledge Stephen Lawrence today as an, as an office and as a force as that came around. Um, moving on to, uh, what has happened, really, the George Floyd, uh, alleged murder in, in Minnesota was, uh, an appalling event. Uh, but I think the result of that, it has had some traction in, in certain communities and, you know, the, the horror that was expressed in, 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 quite rightly in the United States has now been, uh, transferred somewhat to the English, British, uh, scene. And plainly, some of the demonstrations that have taken place, we've had about six in Warwickshire so far, but all around the country, uh, have, have referred to, to the police on, on banners and, and talks given by people on rostrum. So, uh, I, I, I think it's worth stating that that, that was an horrific case. Uh, it was not justifiable. Uh, if it is murder, uh, and proved to be murder, there should be a significant sentence for that, that particular officer in, in Minnesota. Um, I think in, in, in Warwickshire Police, I think the lessons and the samples from abroad have been studied. We police in, in, in the UK, as everybody knows, by consent. Uh, I don't believe that's the same across the rest of the world. And there's been a significant amount of, uh, engagement and response to our residents and communities as to how they think that Warwickshire Police should respond and how they are, are carrying out their, their duties. And it's, it's difficult. It's, uh, they're often, uh, sort of pitched between two competing elements. So we've got the hard left wing and the hard right wing. Police can be in, in the middle somewhat, but I, from my experience and from the reports I've had, all those six demonstrations in Warwickshire have, have gone pretty well. They've been pleased well. There's been good, uh, discussions and talks with the organisers beforehand. Roots have been agreed, timings have been agreed, et cetera. And I think we can be quite proud, actually, of both our residents, communities and our police force in the way that those, quite rightly, rightly, the legal demonstrations have taken place. So I'm, I, I've been quite pleased with that. I mean, you can never be complacent on these occasions. We've got another one in Leamington this weekend and the same planning. And, um, some thoughts and discussions, we'll go into that, as have done all the others. Um, I'd like to say that, um, as a force, uh, I, I have raised, in all the four years I've been, uh, PCC, about racism, inequality, imbalances and biases. And this is not a, an agenda that can be achieved within a week plainly. It, it's a longer term thing. I thought you might be interested, I've got the latest figures for the force, uh, split down into four categories. So our officer number as we speak, and it goes up and down as people retire or new, new recruits come in, is 1,027, of which 33% are female and 5% are from our BAME communities. Uh, staff, we have a total of 833, of which 62% are female and 8% are from the BAME communities. PCSOs total of 92 at the moment, 57 female, 10% BAME. And our specials total of 89 active at the moment, 17% female, 8% BAME. So the conclusion I draw from that, bearing in mind, we think that the Warwickshire BAME population is about 7.2%, plainly, uh, those are historic figures. We'll have to wait for next year's census and other, other studies done to get the, to get the update, accurate figure. But we're working on that. So as an, as an organisation of over 2,000 people, uh, the force and staff, uh, PCSOs and specials together are pretty well representing the communities we serve. Plainly, there is a shortfall in officers, uh, only a third of them are female and only 5% are from the BAME communities. So, uh, I'm, I'm very happy to take questions on that and what is being done about it, uh, later on. So moving back to, to the substance of the report, um, we are now putting in what we're calling positive action. This is not positive discrimination or all BAME shortlist or anything like that. This is positive action to try and engage with our BAME communities and encourage them to look at joining the police as a career. Um, and it's, uh, it's been quite successful. Uh, I've got a long paper with all the stats, but there are quite a lot now in the pipeline who have expressed a desire to join Warwickshire Police. They are going through the recruiting, uh, process, through all the tests and assessments. And I'm very much hopeful that we will see more, higher percentage of, of BAME candidates coming through than we, than we have at the moment. Um, so there has been some progress and that 5.1% of the police officers is higher than it was uh, some years ago, uh, but we're not, we're not quite there yet. Um, I've referred to stop and search and use of force. Uh, that is plainly something that impacts perhaps unproportionately, improperly on the BAME communities here in Warwickshire. I've actually just put the phone down before this to our head of, uh, our superintendent, lead on local policing. Interestingly, 40% of the BAME, um, people in Warwickshire who have been stopped and searched do not live in Warwickshire. Uh, they come from the West Midlands and other, uh, other areas around us. So that, that's quite interesting. Um, we're also, we're looking on the, on the Black Lives Matter, uh, to commission a piece of research so that we can, uh, we can fully understand, uh, what services there are to specifically looking at the needs of BAME adults and children. And we are going to, um, we're going to look at that and see how then we can translate that into action, both within the force and to challenge some of the agencies and partners we work with, specifically in the criminal justice system. And finally on this, I think all these issues are actually societal. I don't think that they are necessarily, um, that, that, I don't think all the organisations in Warwickshire reflect the population probably, so it's something, a lesson we've all got to learn. But we do need to understand, uh, the, the percentages and the proportions of BAMEs, um, in the population, and that includes black, white, mixed race, Asian, um, Eastern European and others. So we can try and make sure that we have a, a fair representation of those communities within the force, within our staff. And I will be challenging other organisations in Warwickshire to, to, to try and aspire to the same, which I think is a good thing to do. Uh, I think that covers that. The termination of the alliance, uh, this will be, uh, I thought it might be one chapter in my memoirs. It's going to be about four. It, it seems to have gone on, but I am pleased to say since the last panel meeting, we have reached an overall settlement with West Mercia Police of £10.77 million. We've already had over half of that. Uh, the remaining half will be coming over the next 12 months. So, uh, that is really good news for, for Warwickshire. Plainly, we were sitting on a cliff edge until that was agreed, uh, looking at significant financial risks and which would have, which would have translated into, into affecting policing in Warwickshire. So I've, I've been pleased the way it, it has come out. It was a long, tortuous route. You, 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 all of you, you, you've travelled that journey with us and, uh, it was, uh, not too soon that that agreement was reached. Um, I think it's worth saying in the public domain, uh, that we are, we, it was Warwickshire who asked for the Home Secretary intervention. It was not imposed upon two squabbling children in the corner of a room. We requested that intervention because we were approaching a cliff edge of not being able to, to resource and fund Warwickshire Police properly. And that was, that was a serious, serious matter for us. So I think that intervention by the Home Secretary brought about the specialised team who were able to, I think, negotiate and mediate, uh, with both sides to, to bring us to this conclusion. We, we still have four services that are being run jointly with, uh, with, with, with West Mercia under Section 22A collaboration agreements. And those are the four services, really, we did not have the time or the expertise or, or, or the people to be able to run those ourselves. And indeed, we've been funding those services since 2012 and they were going to take a long time to disengage and disentangle from the alliance. So those are our IT services, forensic services, transactional, which is our human resource and payroll service, and file storage. So to go through those briefly, information technology, we had in the alliance, we had a £40 million projected programme to completely rebuild a new IT structure uh, and, and disseminate around the, 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 the whole organisation. Uh, and having looked at that and thinking that perhaps Warwickshire was a bit small to rebuild its own, uh, structure completely, we have now signed a, a Section 22 agreement with West Midlands Police, Chairman might remember them. And they are, we are going to join their, their cloud-based and their, and their infrastructure. It doesn't mean that they will run our IT. We would still have our own, our own IT technicians and service, uh, in Warwickshire. But that cloud and that, um, sort of complete data of information, uh, will be stored jointly. Uh, and I think it's actually quite a good thing operationally. Uh, those of you who have wards joining, uh, the West Midlands will know that there's, there's considerable cross-border criminality. And I think if, at least if we can join up on the same system, I think that's going to help future working uh, and, and ability to apprehend some of these offenders who are coming into our area from, particularly from the West Midlands area. Forensics is an interesting one. There's a movement, I think, forensics is getting highly skilled. It has a core history of private sector forensic suppliers going bust and, and, and stopping the service. I think there's a whole national movement now towards probably in, 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 to start with a, a regional forensic, uh, service and then, and then probably with, with quite a lot of national parts to it. So we think it's right to go in with the West Midlands. It, it's the first step towards a regional service. They've got lots of, of, of good kit and whizbangs and everything else to be able to run that service properly. And once again, it would have been extremely expensive for Warwickshire to set that up. Transactional is actually quite important. It's about making sure all our staff and officers are properly paid. Once again, there will be a service in Warwickshire to answer queries and everything else. But the widget business of sorting out pensions and payroll and holiday entitlements and HR issues with the force will be done on that central collaborated system. So very happy with that. File storage is about storage of old evidence and we have to keep for a number of years. We've currently, there's a huge great warehouse in Worcestershire and we're going to continue doing that. And we are, we're going to be paying a rent and that'll be a hosted service by West Mercia, which we won't go on forever because we don't have to keep those items forever. But there's a certain time lag where we have to keep them. So that's, that's where it's at. We're now looking forwards from the alliance now into the future. Warwickshire has rebuilt itself into a standalone force with the support of all, all parts of our Warwickshire and our partners in this. We're of course looking to collaborate on other things where we can see that there is both an operational and a financial incentive to do so. And I think Warwickshire is now well based. We're well funded. We may come on to the funding later on. We have reasonable reserves. We are, we have a budget which is achievable both this year and in the medium term. And I have been really pleased as to the way that we have readjusted to the big challenge that Warwickshire faced. And I think residents and communities in Warwickshire can look forward to a resilient and a responsive force that they can be proud of. So that is my ambition. Moving on to the establishment, I've probably given most of those figures, but happy to take any questions. I think it's just worth saying that extra council tax money that we all agreed to pay over the last two years has borne fruit in the force. First of all, our patrol, when, a couple of years ago, our total numbers in patrol were 313. That's now increased by 31, up to 344. That benefits the whole county. And they, as you all know, they're now based not only in Greys, Mallory and Bedworth, they're based at Coles Hill, Stratford and Alster, which gives a much better response time to the whole county. And I think, I've always said, Mr Chairman, that it was outrageous that North Warwickshire as a borough did not have a patrol base. And now we've got one in Coles Hill. I think, you know, particularly your rural communities should get a quicker response to the 999 call. Vehicle crime teams, they've been strengthened. We now have quite a big team of two sergeants and 12 PCs, split into two teams, one located at Bedworth, one at Greys. They're having some real impact on the increase of vehicle crime activity. And what we want them to do is to study and specifically understand what is driving vehicle crime in the county and to go after those offenders who are driving that crime. And they've had some really good success. I think it's actually been quite a little bit easier in lockdown because there haven't been so many vehicles on the road. And they've been able to target vehicles with the use of ANPR and other intelligence from the, from the West Midlands, some of these serious and organised crime who are coming to take or damage our vehicles here in Warwickshire. So I'm pretty happy with that. The OPU, although not an uplift in people, has plainly now been able to concentrate on their own schemes with the increase in the other teams. They haven't had to deal with those. So that is going forward. We've doubled the size of the rural crime team. They're currently recruiting and that we will now have separate teams in the north of Warwickshire and in the south of Warwickshire to be able to concentrate on those problems. I think that's probably about it on the force, but happy to take any questions as to how that's been going. But I've been pleased that we've been able to get above the 1,000 mark pretty quickly. I think it's worth saying that there's been a national survey of the increase in police officer numbers, which was 20,000 from the Prime Minister has driven. The second highest increase in police officers so far is 7% by Humber Side Force. The highest is Warwickshire, which is double that, 14%. We've recruited way over the amount, four times the amount those 20,000 would have allowed us to do in the first two tranches. And that is, that money has come in from our council taxpayers as well as some significant increases in national funding as well. So pleased with that. My aim was always, one of my prime chief aims was to increase officer numbers. Not only does that give the force more numbers to reduce and detect crime, in that order I hope, but also it's had a significant benefit for visibility of officers out in our communities. And quite a number of comments and contacts I've had from individuals and communities said they have noticed there are more officers about. And although an officer either on a bike or walking or in a vehicle doesn't actually stop a criminal doing something, it does give our residents some security and confidence that they are, that we're about, out and about on the streets. And that has gone down pretty well. Moving on, criminal justice, Mr Chairman. This is a significant challenge nationally. There is a huge backlog of cases building up within the criminal justice system. I partake, and I think I'm probably going to take on the chairmanship of the local criminal justice board to try and do something about this here in Warwickshire. We are finding that the problem that the force and the Crown Prosecution and Probation Service are having is that the court system is not providing enough courts to put cases to trial. Some of this is COVID related whereby it's quite difficult to get a court of 12 jury members, all the witnesses and victims, all the lawyers and the whole court apparatus into a building. We have actually just, we're now participating in a scoping and exercise of looking at what has been called Nightingale Courts whereby the court service can set up courts in other central buildings. We've written to all your authorities. I hope you can respond positively on that. I mean, I'm thinking probably of leisure centres. I'm thinking possibly of town halls. They do need to be pretty substantial buildings with quite a lot of off rooms for juries and lawyers and everyone else to meet. And they obviously will have to abide by social distancing rules. It's not an easy one, but in my mind, if we can get more people, more courts open and more offenders and accused into those courts, we can, we can reduce this backlog. And I think the effect of the backlog is actually going to be felt by victims as much as by anybody else. And I think we have a duty to ensure cases are brought before the courts on behalf of victims. And I'm working with all those other criminal justice partners and organisations that support victims to do just that. So happy to take questions on that. It's quite a complicated piece nationally, but I've had calls with the secretary about this. I've had calls with the policing minister, who's also a minister in the MOJ. And I've had a calls with David Buckland, who is the, sorry, not David Buckland, Robert Buckland. David Buckland's in Stratford. Robert Buckland, who is the Lord Chancellor and is Secretary of State for Justice. So we're doing what we can locally and regionally and nationally to bring that forward. Moving on, I hope you can still hear me. My IT can crash at any time, but it seems to be working at the moment. I'm on to grants. We've now issued this year £2.25 million worth of commissioned and grant monies. Of this, about just over £1 million to our grant scheme. And that's gone right across the board. And we have continued with most of the beneficiaries of our schemes. We've given enhanced sums and figures where necessary. Because of the COVID-19 breakout, we have issued those grants earlier to organisations. We're aware of a lot of those organisations we support get funding from elsewhere. Some are charities. Some get funding from other areas across the public sector. And I think it's, it's right to say that some of them are having financial challenges. So firstly, we pushed out the money earlier than we normally do. We gave the decision and we pushed the money out earlier than we normally do. And secondly, we have, because of the COVID-19, we have created another fund of many hundreds of thousands where we are going to look at bidding process to get organisations that are particularly badly hit by COVID-19 financially to be able to bid for extra funds. That will have to come out of reserves, but I think that is the right thing to do. And we'll see what bids we get in. We should be able to report back to the next panel how that goes. Moving on, again, we've got the commissioned grant services, which we do every year. Most of them are in organisations that are reasonably financially secure. County Council is quite a lot of that. We have our crime advisers and our trading standards officers and our business crime advisers, et cetera. So they are not, they have not, none of them been furloughed. They are all operating properly. We've been checking on that. And incidentally, with all our grant and commission services recipients, we've kept in constant touch to check that they can indeed themselves carry out a service. For example, victim support. We give them £600,000 each year, one of our major beneficiaries. Many discussions with them as to how they're operating. They are, they are operating from home. They tell me that they've been able to support victims and they are getting the usual amount of victims being referred to them for support services. So that's pretty good. I'm then going to move on to emergency funding. And you've had an addendum, which is actually confidential. So I'd rather not talk about that. But happy to in the confidential part. The reason it's confidential is that we've been awarded the money, but we haven't actually had it confirmed as to how it will be split. That's an MOJ decision. And we don't want our suggested figures into the public domain, which may change in the future for some of those beneficiaries. So that's the reason for that. Under performance, we've instituted the new performance management challenge to the Chief Constable holding to account once a month. And you'll see there on page seven, those are some of the topics we've had a specific, like deep dive into, 101s, investigations, victims, public questions on COVID-19, serious and organised time, criminal justice. You'll probably gather those are most of the topics, the major topics that we get correspondence from our residents and from our communities. There is an addendum there with the performance report, the PAM as we call them, scrutiny process with questions and answers from the force. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And of course, there's the COVID-19 supplement as well, which hopefully you've all got, which should be useful to understand what we are doing or what the force is doing. Moving on, I'm nearly there, Mr Chairman. You'll be pleased to hear. We had a, the first meeting of the PAM was on the 27th of May and we go forward. There's a little bit about the Office of the Police and Crime Commissioner. We've got a new member, Richard Long, who will take over from Helen Earp on our vulnerability portfolio, a really important part. He will continue to monitor such things as the SARC up at George Elliot at Nuneaton. He will continue to monitor and challenge the mental health trust on our triage, mental health triage services and those sorts of things, as well as domestic and sexual abuse and other important things. Finally, I'm going to finish with the list of formal decisions. Some of those exempt because they are commercially sensitive, but it gives you a flavour of some of the major decisions we've made since the last panel meeting. And actually, we've been really busy and there are a number of really important decisions in there going forwards into the future. So I think, Mr Chairman, that probably is long enough for an introduction, but happy to take questions as you see fit.
Thank you, Philip. Right, we have five questioners, so we can take them in the following order. Andy Davis, Ian, Maggie, Jenny, Sarah. So Andy, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioner. Just going back to your Black Lives Matters section you included in your report. Thanks for including the figures in there around BAME staff and, and police officers. But it'd be really useful for us to understand the proportions of BAME staff and officers that are in senior and leadership roles, both within the force and with your office would be really helpful. And then just a follow-up question to that really is what actions do you think you could pursue so that leadership positions are actually more representative of the county's population? And again, that's both within the force and within your own office.
Philip, you're muted this time.
Thank you, Andy. Good question. I was talking to myself. Good to see you on the call. I think that question is important. I'll give you the answer as I understand it. Anyone else in my office, when I finish, if they want to come in with more information can do so. I think there is a disappointing lack of BAME representation in the force leadership. And well, I don't think there is certainly not a senior officer, chief, deputy and the two ACCs. And I don't think at the moment we've got a chief super either. So that is, is not a good position to be in. But I think steps are being taken through the positive action process to amend that. And actually, that's one of the things we can do a bit quicker and a bit easier if those positions become vacant. Chief supers are extremely expensive and, you know, we're not, we don't have the money to be able to create more chief superintendents just to incorporate, just to sort of take on BAME applicants. So the force are well aware of that. I've challenged that on many times. And that is something to be done. I have to say, down at the lower levels, it's much better, PC and sergeant level, and there are quite a lot of inspectors from the BAME community. But it's just, you're right, the senior leadership is where there is a gap which needs to be worked on. In the force, we have an office 12 and we have two from our, from a BAME community. So plainly, we're well above the average representation there. We're going to take on another good lady who, from the Black Caribbean community, starting in September. So that'll put us up to three out of, we'll be up to 25% in the office. So happy with the way the office is looking to the outside world. Okay.
Thank you, Andy. Does that pick up anything, everything that you want to scrutinise? I've got Zainab, who is signaling to speak as well. But Andy, do you have any further questions?
Partly, I'm just really interested in those routes to leadership, I think, through the force, I think, a little bit more transparent about those, I think would be really helpful for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point, Andy. And I've actually asked, I want to know, hopefully the County Council Observatory can help us. What is actually is the breakdown in Warwickshire, the latest figures they've got of all communities, not just black and Asian, but all mixed race and others, as I've said earlier on. Now, Zainab is from our office, everybody. She is plainly from the BAME community and deals with equality matters. I'm very happy for Zainab to contribute to this debate.
Thank you, Philip. I thought I would just add in a little bit more detail around the question that Andy's just asked around really the retention and progression of BAME staff in the force. So in terms of the positive action work that Warwickshire Police are doing at the moment, there are three work strands. One is around recruitment, which is something that the positive action team, and I've been working closely with the positive action team in Warwickshire Police, plainly, there's been a large recruitment drive that's been done. And a focus has been around trying to encourage people from BAME communities to apply. And the PCC's office has also participated in community engagement exercises to listen to our community, our BAME community, around what their concerns are or any potential barriers they might have in considering a career in the police force, which is really important when we're looking at trust and confidence and reasons why BAME communities may not join. I think the other strand that I'd like to speak to, which is really the focus of Andy's question, is around retention and progression. So currently in Warwickshire Police, our most senior BAME officers are at the chief inspector level. And for a force of our size and BAME representation, we would ideally like to see representation from the BAME community, at least at the superintendent level. And so we know that we're not necessarily where we need to be in terms of senior representation in the force. So what the force are doing, and I'm working with them on this programme, is around coaching and mentoring. And again, as we're looking at external barriers to entry into the force, we're also looking at potential barriers to BAME individuals within the force and their progression to higher ranks. So there's a piece of work at the moment, looking at coaching and mentoring offers for BAME individuals within the organisation and looking at what may be in terms of organisational culture, what the force can do better to make sure that BAME individuals in the force are supported to achieve the best, to the best of their ability essentially. And that way, I think it's a long-term piece of work. We won't see these results overnight, but I think But I think that in examining the organisational culture and promoting a coaching and mentoring culture for BAME individuals, I think that we will see more BAME individuals climbing up the ranks and getting the representation at the senior level that we would want to get to. So I hope that gives a little bit more detail around the work that we're trying to do with the force and continuing to scrutinise the work that they're doing to ensure that BAME individuals in the force are supported to achieve to their full, full potential.
Okay, thank you, Zainab. Andy, do you have a follow up at all?
Thank you, thank you.
And I, I suppose then the only thing that I would say is while, while you are waiting for people to develop their careers and develop their skills and experiences, there is still that question about how do matters and issues get raised to the executive of the force at the earliest opportunity? So the rank actually isn't important, is it? What's important is that the key sensitivities and the key, the key blockages are raised now and start being worked on. But thank you for that. Colleagues, it'd be okay if I move on to Ian Davison and Ian's question? Ian?
Thank you, just trying to work the button out. I hope I've succeeded. Thank you for that, Commissioner and Zainab. I'd like to ask two questions. One's not really related to this. The first question though is, and you've said something about the complexity of the figures with stop and search and use of force and so on. But you haven't presented the figures. So it's clearly an important area. So it's asking if before not too long, you can present more detail to this panel about that. You used the word disproportionate or something like that. It's clearly a big issue, so it'd be good if you could get into that. I'll say the second question, although it's unrelated. Well, it may be related and you will know in South Leamington, unfortunately this year, there've been a number of serious incidents, including two fatal stabbings. Again, you may not be able to say much at this stage because I understand the second stabbing is ongoing, but it clearly relates to long, well, I'm assuming it relates to long term underlying issues. You use the phrase societal in that. That may well be true. But again, if you could before not too long bring some sort of detail about those issues to this panel, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, Dave, another good couple of points. Stop and search is, is a complicated, it's not, not always easy to, to record accurately, for a start. But one of the things I have done is I've given the force the money, once again, paid for by taxpayers, that every officer now, when there is a stop and search operation carried out, has to turn on their body worn video. I don't know whether any of you have ever seen the body worn video evidence. It is, it is really good. The sound is good, the picture and image is good. And that has been a considerable benefit. And actually, it's a double benefit because not only does it protect the person who is being stopped and searched from any, any behaviour that might be considered not appropriate or proportionate, but it also protects the officer in that he or she carried out proportionate behaviour as well. So it, it's a really good thing. I think it's, it has deescalated the whole business of stop and search. But we are perfectly aware that there are, you know, proportionately, the BAME community are stopped and searched more often and we need to understand why that is, what's driving that and how we can reduce that. But that is an operational matter. I keep challenging the, the chief on and I keep getting, you know, reasonable responses. You know, if we suspect something, we stop somebody, we stop and search them. And they don't particularly choose any particular race or creed or colour. If there's, if there's something that is worthy of investigation, it is their duty to do that. And that's why I say it's societal. Why are we finding that, you know, people from, you know, our minority communities are often involved in being stopped and searched and indeed through the court process and in our prisons? Why is that? That's for all of us in this, on this call to consider. What are we going to do about that? So yeah, I, I think it's a fair question. We'll try and come back with, with a little bit more detail. Just a chance to, for a bit of an advert. Tonight, I am appearing on a, on a virtual public meeting along with Janade Hussain, who is our, who's on our Safe and Warrick partnership board, who represents our minority communities. And we've got, I think, 30 or 40 joining, including the organisers of all the marches we've had in Warwickshire and representatives from the BAME communities right across Warwickshire. I'm opening, I'm the opening speaker, I think. Then we've got our, our chief superintendent local policing, who's going to talk about stop and search. There's a number of really good questions. Why, why am I more likely to be stopped? What can I do if, if I'm with someone who's being stopped and searched? Can I film them? And all sorts of very detailed questions about stop and search. I'm sure some, I'm hoping very much that some statistics will come out of that. We've then got, and he is also chairman of the force legitimacy board, so he's going to talk about use of force and take questions from BAME representatives. We've also got Faz Chisti, who is a chief inspector, who's plainly from a, a, a minority Asian community, who is going to talk about positive action and the things that Zainab spoke about earlier on. So, so that's good. And then there will be a big, this is on tonight, there'll be a big question and answer session at the end. So I think a number of the things you've asked, Andy, sorry, Ian, will come up in that. The second question, yeah, you're quite right. Same answer in many ways. This is a societal problem. Why are mainly people coming from out of our area into places like Leamington and dealing drugs? Why are they doing that? Why, what are we going to do to stop them doing that? I can't, we can't say that, that both murders, tragic as they were, were both county lines, if you like, as a result of, but we think they probably were. And incidentally, as I understand it, all the offenders and all the victims of both those murders did not live in Warwickshire. So there's another good reason why we need to work closely with, with, with West Midlands Police. They didn't all come from the West Midlands either, I think some were from London. So this is a, a problem. I think during this COVID-19, there's been quite a lot of interception of, on county lines activity and drug activity, obviously helped by the lack of vehicles on the road. So we hope, we, we would have intercepted, interdicted some of the serious and organised crime groups who are doing this. And it, it looks to me as though serious and organised crime groups, rather than bringing vulnerable people from their area to, to do this, dealing on their behalf in our areas, they're, they're trying to recruit local people in our area to do that. And mainly, these are youngsters and vulnerable youngsters at that. And we all have a duty, all authorities in Warwickshire, to, to understand why that's happening and how we can stop that happening. Tragic murders. I've had the Member of Parliament from Warwick and Leamington, as you will imagine, onto me to talk about this. And it is something we don't want to see repeated. But I, I would just, just reiterate, to reduce these things, it needs a partnership, combined approach from all of us.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Colleagues, we are approaching the end of our first hour and we've got a lot of business to get through. So I welcome the debate, but can I just remind everybody of a bit of a need for brevity as we move forward, without taking the quality out of, of what we're talking about? I've got four people listed to speak at the moment. Just to refresh, I've got Maggie, I've got Jenny, I've got Sarah, and then I've got Pete Gilbert. Maggie?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. And thank you to the Commissioner for that very detailed report that it's just given. Yes, lots of interesting information in there. Referring back again to Black Lives Matters. Some wonderful stuff, obviously, you're doing. Very glad to hear all that and the stuff you're doing around leadership and coaching and mentoring is really great. But we all know that the public sector is challenged and, you know, this is not just, this isn't news. This, this has been going on for a long time in terms of the lack of representation in very senior posts from BAME communities. And of course, it's really important that we start taking action and, and be really transparent about that to build trust back in the community. So one of the things I would like to ask is, obviously now our HR services are in fact shared across the Western Midlands as well. How can we ensure in the recruitment process that we build in, what we need to build in for Warwickshire to build a force that's representative of its community? And could we please follow Andy Street's lead? In terms of the mayor of the West Midlands Combined Authority has worked with lots of his local councils and they are now required to ensure that there is always a BAME member of staff on interviewing panels. So that, you know, because if you look at the recruitment process, the shortlisting to appointment is a big issue. So I would, I would ask if we could push for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Maggie. Good, good points. Firstly, about the HR function, again, it's operational. We do, we do sort of scrutinise exactly what, what they do and how they do it. I think the answer is we, I have asked, Chief Constable has asked, that we make it possible for BAME individuals to, to want to, to want to carry out and indeed enter into a career in our police force. So that starts in schools, that starts in, in youth organisations, it starts with, with parents, it starts with getting out into mosques and gudaras and all sorts of other places around Warwickshire to say that, you know, individuals will be very welcome. They, they have a part to play. We think it's right that, 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 that there should be a BAME representation roughly, roughly in, in accordance with our, with our population. So you're quite right. This is the same for the County Council, this is the same for the, you know, criminal justice partners right across the public sector. And I did, and I think indeed the private sector could, could learn some good lessons as well, having run a business myself. So I think that's important. Yeah, positive action does include lots of the things you've talked about. I'm, I'm not sure that I, I've seen it written down that we would have a BAME member on a, an interview panel, but most of the panels I've done, for example, the panel that interviewed for the new, to the Deputy Chief Constable, we conducted last year, that, the same Janade Hussain was on that panel. When we conducted interview for our latest policy officer, Zainab was on the panel, you know. So I think we're probably doing it, we're just not knowing about it. And you're absolutely right, you know, one, it needs to be fair, the process. Both, you know, interviewing for new jobs but, and, and for joining, but indeed for promotion as well within the force. So yeah.
Thank you. I forgot Zainab, you're signalling that she'd like to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Just on that specific point that Maggie's raised about having a BAME individual on interviewing panel. One thing the Positive Action have actually started to implement in the interviewing process for new officers is to have a community representative. And that arose out of the meeting that I referred to, the public meeting we did with community representatives, to talk to them about what are their barriers around entering the force? And so one thing that came out quite clearly was that the interviewing process itself was a barrier for people particularly from BAME communities and that they would like to see more external scrutiny and input into those interviewing processes. And so what the Positive Action team have now implemented, which has been received quite well, especially from our BAME communities, is to have an external community representative on the interviewing panel, just to provide that level of independent scrutiny. So that's something that's been done quite recently and I think will continue into the future. So that's just to answer that specific point.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Jenny, then Sarah, then Peter.
Okay, thank you, Chair. My question is really, if you are successful in attracting people from BAME and minority communities into the police force, and we've talked about the mentoring and, and support, I'm aware that people actually having joined the police force then actually leave because they feel they haven't been listened to and there isn't a proper complaints, supportive complaints and transparent complaint system, which would actually address issues which might arise during their careers. And I think it's incredibly important that the Complaints Committee is a supportive and robust one. What is in place in Warwickshire and how will it be improved as we go forward?
Okay, thank you, Jenny. It's really important that all employees of all organisations understand there is a proper complaints and grievance process. I'd say that to start with. I'm not an expert on the force's current grievance or complaint process, but there is one. And if you've got a case that you'd like to send me, please do. If you've got an individual's case where they felt they were, they were treated unfairly and I will look into that. But you're quite right that anyone in the force, whatever, whoever it is, needs to have a, needs to have a, a proper mechanism whereby they can, they can report and resolve a grievance. And I've had no complaints from anyone else on that topic. So, but I will, I'll look into it for you.
Okay, thank you. Zainab, briefly, you've got a response as well?
Sure, just in response to Jenny's question, this is another piece of work that I'm looking at with the force. And because we do know at the moment that BAME individuals who enter do leave in disproportionate rates. And another piece of work is also looking around the professional standards department within Warwickshire Police, because we know that BAME individuals are also more likely to be the subject of complaints from members of the public as well. And so it's about making those processes robust. And one thing that I've discussed with the Positive Action Team as well is, and this is around the retention strand of work that we're looking at, is making sure that if any BAME individuals are leaving the organisation, that we have a look at the exit interview and make sure, ideally you don't want to get to that point, but if it does, then to make sure that their feedback is taken into account. And then also looking at our professional standards department to ensure that they have the adequate unconscious bias training and that any issues of disproportionality around complaints being made against BAME individuals are treated fairly. So that's definitely something that we're looking at the moment because we know it's an issue. This isn't just specific to Warwickshire, but it's also a national issue that BAME individuals in the force are more likely to have grievances and to also be the subject of complaints.
Can I just say, Chair, that's a very comforting answer and I would like updates on that when we meet actually in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. I, I think maybe what we should say with this is, is before the end of the year, we'd like to have a, a report to the board from the PCC's office about the efficiency aspects of making sure that we don't have any discrimination within the organisation and all of the associated motivational issues that come out of that. I think today's debate, everybody, has really nicely illustrated the complexity of the issue at hand. And it has taken some time, it's been time well spent. But as a proposal, how about I sit down with John and we come back to the panel members through email? John Cole, that is. We come back to the panel members through email with a, a request for a, a specific agenda item from the PCC's office at probably not our September meeting, because that's fairly quick and there is a piece of work to be done, but before the end of 2021 with that, 2020 rather. Would that be okay with everybody? It's in November, actually. Okay, thank you. Sarah, you've been waiting and Peter, you've been waiting. Sarah?
Yes, thank you for that. Philip, I wonder if you could elaborate just a little bit on the bidding process that's going to take place from organisations post, post-COVID really? Because I would hate to think that, for example, organisations around domestic abuse are going to have to wait for the bid, all of the bids to get in. We, we already know and expect the figures to go up. And if we've had any need for money from that for the PCC, that they're not going to be delayed in getting the money that is required to give that exceptionally important service to, to individuals. You know, I know that, you know, checks and balances have to be made, but you know, sometimes these things do have to be expedited. And my second question is, how much of the West Mercia grant is going to be set aside for pension deficits for the future? Thank you.
Okay, I will answer the first one. I will ask, I'll ask Sarah, my, my 151 officer to make a comment on the second question. Right, emergency grants, Sarah, this is public taxpayers' money. It's, it's not in my gift, just to give it out. There has to be an evaluation process. There has to be a, you know, a justification for giving out any penny of taxpayers' money to an outside organisation. But, but it is important in the COVID text that we, we get money out quickly. So this process will be shortened. We're now getting quite good at evaluating grants and issuing monies to various organisations. We are currently drawing up the sort of terms of what we're, how, how we're prepared to, to grant money. It has to be in accordance with, with the Police and Crime Plan, plenty to, to further the issues raised in that. And we will be looking specifically at those organisations who are finding that they're being, that they're, they're being hampered on raising money elsewhere. And there are a number of organisations that we support who, who have charitable donations, they have fundraisers and all the rest of it, and we will take them into account. But it will be, the monies will be issued But it will be, the monies will be issued as soon as possible, and there's no reason why they shouldn't be issued within the next, let's say, four weeks, three or four weeks, which is pretty quick. And, you know, as I say, we are, we are taking money out of reserves specifically to help organisations in Warwickshire who are struggling. So please don't think that we're sitting back and.
No, no, I'm not. Just, thank you. These are extraordinary times that we're all working in. Thank you.
Sarah, do you just want to say a bit about where that money is going that we've received from West Mercia?
Yes, I can do. Thank you, Philip, and thank you, Chair. Yes, in terms of the 10.77 million for the settlement that we've received, we will be putting all of that money into our reserves, and then we've got our reserve strategy, which we've just republished for how we're going to be using that reserve over the medium term. So most of that money initially in 2021 will be used to fund the Evolve programme, which is the change programme to enable us to transition to our new state. But in terms specifically of pensions, the recent revaluation will result for the LGPS scheme in terms of increased contributions, which will be part of our budget, our annual budget. And if there is any spending pressure there, then clearly we will deal with that as part of the budget process moving forward for 21, 22. In terms of police pensions, that's an unfunded scheme, so it's slightly different to the LGPS scheme. We have received increased pensions grant from central government over the last couple of years. And again, any additional costs are built into our budget, so they're financed in that way. Now, we do have drawdown from the reserve across the medium term financial plan. I think it's about 1.7 million over the next two years, but I probably ought to check that figure actually and confirm that back to you. But certainly we've got an earmarked reserve set up, which we will draw down against over the next two years for our budget. Beyond that, we're looking, and our vision is towards a sustainable budget. So we will, what we're, what we're looking at is that our income will match our expenditure.
Okay, thanks very much indeed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Has that covered all the issues you were interested in at the moment? Okay, thank you. And last but by no means least, because one could never, never say least about Peter Gilbert. Peter?
Thanks for the introduction, Chair, but move progress. I think my question has kind of been covered, so.
All right, fabulous. Thank you, Peter. Thank you. Colleagues, do we have any more questions for the PCC before we move on? I do remind you, it's 11.40, and I was only joking when I said this meeting was going to be five hours long. No, thank you very much indeed. Thank you, Philip. Can we please move on then to the Performance Report, which is Agenda Item 2.2? Who will be presenting the Performance Report?
Hello, Chair, it's Philip. I refer to that. I think that the next three agenda items, they're all there, they're set out in, I don't think they need introductions, they're all set out in detail. If anyone's got any questions, we'll take them.
Okay, colleagues, proposal from Philip, which I think is a sound one. I know we've got some questions on it, particularly on 2.2. Anybody anything on 2.1? Maggie, I can see you've got a hand up. Is that historic hand or is it a current hand?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm at the right place. It was around the vulnerability data. So.
Let me come to you as we go through then. So I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to page 32, which is also marked as page two. And that's on the document 2.2, which is the OPCCE Performance Scrutiny Report for Warwickshire Police. And I've got Bob Dan as having a question to raise around outcomes. Bobby, are you still okay?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Commissioner, you may well know that the Performance and Planning Group has always been particularly interested in the outcome rates and particular concern about low outcome rates. And I know that's a concern that's been shared by yourself and your office. The figures in this report for action taken show considerable improvement, drastic improvement, which is wonderful to see. I wonder if you have any idea about whether this is a short-term spike? Or do you have any evidence that improvements to processes have been implemented by the force? And this might be a sustained improvement that we can look forward to?
Yep, thank you, Bob. Good to see you. I think this is, we're going to have to wait and see. I think probably the improvements have been somewhat engineered by the onset of COVID-19. Having said that, they are improved figures, and it's looking better. So, I mean, if you like, my aspiration would be that these figures would continue to improve. But kind of time will tell when we look back in hindsight. But it is important for everybody, it's specifically victims, as I've said before. The outcome in, and I assume you're referring to item three outcomes, is, you know, it's dealt with as soon and as efficiently as possible.
Thank you.
Bobby, are you okay or would you like to?
Thanks for that. I mean, I think it just seems so important to me. As I say, the Performance and Planning Group has spent quite a bit of time on it in the past. If you look at some of the other figures we look at, like satisfaction rates, confidence in the police and so on, it all links together, doesn't it? I mean, if the person who commits a crime against me gets caught, you know, it affects other indicators. And I think it is on our long-term work plan, Chair, for us to keep an eye on the outcome rates, and that's something we can come back to. And as the Commissioner says, time will tell if this is sustained. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bob. And just clarifying your comment about it being on the work plan for the Performance Group, we are still in discussions with the PCC's office about the areas of scrutiny for the Performance Group around crime investigation and outcome processes. And without doubt, I know that Sarah as Chair has got some very clear focus that she wants to drive forward on that.
Chair, can I just butt in rudely? The next item was actually about road safety. I've had some figures this morning that are looking pretty good. The year to the end of March, in other words, the 2019, 2020 financial year, has seen a reduction of 20% in road fatalities in Warwickshire. Now, that is really good news. That is, it's dropped from 35, you remember previous year, down to 28. And that is seven families who don't have to go through a tragedy. And I'd like to think this is a result actually of all of us, the County Council's Road Safety Department, my own road safety funding and grants to those organisations who can help, and of course, the police force, who I told you earlier have increased their roads policing, and a lot of that is to do with reduction of accidents and road safety. So a good thing that's happened. Perhaps it'll be even better during the COVID-19 when we look at that. We'll have to see how it goes.
Yeah, thank you, Philip. And I am really conscious about the leadership that the PCC's office has provided with the Killed and Serious Injury Reduction Programme, not least through your championing of the agenda, but also your investment of significant funds. The reductions are without doubt to be celebrated. However, whether we can put a direct line between cause and effect, I think remains to be significantly disputed. And I sit here as a representative to North Warwickshire, having had the two fatalities, one of which in my own division. So there is without doubt still far more work to be done. And I look forward to your continuing challenge of both the Highways Authority and Highways England to make sure that they are properly focusing, because I still don't have confidence personally that they are properly focusing. But I am very grateful for your personal leadership in this matter, because you are making a difference. Moving on to page 38, Maggie?
Okay, yeah, under the vulnerability stuff, I mean, some good news stories there clearly, but I'm very, very, very concerned about the 79.2% increase in vulnerable offences. And I note on the minutes that we've been, someone's been asking for a detailed breakdown of that audit. And I think, you know, I'd be interested in your views on that, Commissioner, because is it COVID related? I mean, why this sudden increase and what are we doing about it? And when can we see the figures, please?
Okay, well, thank you, Maggie. Yeah, I mean, the figures are there. And I'm going to, generally, I would say that we anticipated during the lockdown that there would be a spike in domestic abuse and vulnerability offences. I think that was probably bound to happen with perpetrators and victims stuck in the same building for days and weeks on end. This is something we particularly raised with those organisations that deal with domestic abuse. We very much support the operation of the MASH, and as you know, that's a joint operation with Warwickshire County Council, and with working with social services, the NHS, the Mental Health Trust, everybody has a part to play in this. But Dave Patterson, are you on the call? Can you expand a bit on those figures?
Are you muted, Dave?
Hello, good morning. Yeah, not really. I mean, we've had raised a bit of force, I think, I guess they are concerning. The response that's come back is that it's due to increased office performance, a lot of new offices in the organisation control, but all the debt falls through. So that's a good thing. I think COVID certainly has a good impact, but the level of status, the concern was rather that the MASH and the agencies in the past have actually been able to do. And the answer that's come back is that yes, they do. So it's not a contempt of the force can manage it. And we're also pretend that those referrals are improving for reasons as well. I take the point that it is considered a set to a very simple level to combat it. We've had no feedback from agencies to say that's been able to cope with it. So that's the situation.
Okay, Dave, you're slightly breaking up there, but I think I've got the gist of what you were saying.
Can you hear probably, Dave?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Dave, your signal is breaking in and out. Maggie? Would you like to come back on anything or should we move on?
No, I'll leave it for now.
Okay, we know you're interested and there's more work to be done with that. Colleagues, anything else on Agenda Item 2.2, which is the Force Performance Scrutiny before we, and accountability meeting? Before we move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the Supplement to the Police and Crime Plan, which I know we have some questions about? No, thank you very much indeed. Can I take you to Agenda Item Three then, please, which is number, page number 41 in our packs, which is the Warwickshire Police and Crime Panel COVID-19 Supplement. Philip, we've all read the document, so unless you want to say anything specifically, take it as read. But we do have four speakers on this, please.
Let's go straight to questions. Let's go straight to questions, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Andy, you have the first question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Commissioner, is there, is there an exit strategy for the COVID plan? So it feels very much like a whole series of new priorities and new ways of working initiatives were introduced really quickly by the force. But in the document, there's no reference to a way out of it. So it's just interesting to get your views on the exit strategy for the plan. And then just a follow-up question on that, which is really about evaluating anything that's worked particularly well as part of the COVID plan, that the force may want to adopt for the longer term in terms of its ways of working to achieve efficiencies or about bringing in the new normal.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Well, your first question is, I'm not sure how to answer that. We act under government guidelines and guidance. We are, we are also concerned, having had two recent outbreaks in Warwickshire, that there may be a second wave of this virus. We don't understand the virus properly. We don't have a vaccine. I'm wandering now into sort of national things, but I don't know how long this is going to go on for. I genuinely do not know, and I don't think anybody does. We all want it to finish as soon as possible, plainly as soon as, you know, and it's not only the virus, it's the effects of the virus with all the unemployment and everything else, and people coming off furloughed. My own son is being furloughed, he's got no idea what his future is. And it affects all families, this virus, in many different ways. I've had an aunt who's died, and I went to her funeral the other day of coronavirus. It affects everybody, and we just don't know enough about it, Andy. I can't say much more. As far as, you know, good things that have come out of the plan, it's a strategic document, the actual plan. We have a slightly more detailed action plan to come out of it. There again, Dave Patterson is the expert on this, but I felt it was the right thing to do. It was, it's been sent out to all our partners, and they understand that we do have a COVID-19 response as an organisation. And the force are very much complying with the guidance that we've set out in how we feel Warwickshire should. I don't know whether, Dave, Dave Patterson, your reception was not good. I couldn't hardly hear you. Do you want to try once more, just briefly, on that second question?
Sorry, Dave, but we can't, we can't hear you. We can see you, but your voice is breaking up and going in and out of phase.
Can I suggest, Chairman, that we perhaps have a look at this in September? I mean, you know, to both Andy's questions, we're going to be able to give more answers anyway.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, part of the discussion falls into the confidential discussion that we'd have after we, later on in the agenda, because I know Christopher Watkins has got some clear views as well. All right, so can we move forward, please, to Maggie and then Ian, who've got questions? Maggie?
Yes, a very full report. Thank you for that. Lots of recommendations there. And I'm just interested in terms of, there's a lot of talk about partnership working and lots of talk about budgets and opportunities, but how's that going to work in reality?
Okay, do you want me to refer, can you refer me to the part of the report that you're asking in detail of?
It's under the recommendations. I mean, the report reads very well. It's a really good report. And it's really pleasing to see at the end of the report some recommendations, because you don't always get recommendations. So on page 56, we've got seven recommendations. And this, for me, there's a general theme running through the recommendations around the importance of partnership working, influence in terms of a sort of a.
Maggie, can I just, can I just say, I think you're referring to the substance misuse element, which is Agenda Item Five. We haven't come to that one yet, if you're talking about page 56.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Shall we, shall we come back to you in a minute? Ian, you wanted to raise some issues about climate change and the addendum to the leasing plan?
Yes, so it may be the same answer you give to Andy in that it's about climate change. I didn't see it in your plan. Obviously, if it's there, it'd be fantastic. We discussed previously about refurbishment of HQ and so on, buildings like that, the importance of trying to look for sustainability at the outset, rather than trying to go do it later. But in terms of coming out of COVID, the build back better phrase, I'm sure you're probably sick of by now, but it may well be in terms of looking at the behaviour, the actions, the way things work, both for your office and for the police force generally, whether there are things that can be kept. So an obvious one is more homeworking, so less office space may be needed, less travelling and so on. So if you've got thoughts about climate change and building back better, that would be great.
Yeah, thanks, Ian, and I would absolutely expect you to ask such a question. I think, from my point of view, I think the COVID-19 outbreak has taught us all a few lessons about climate change and about carbon, carbon escape and capture and everything. And there's no doubt that the, you know, the lack of air travel, the lack or the big reduction in air travel, the big reduction in road traffic and trains and everything else, has considerably improved our environment and our carbon reduction. But plainly, we're going to have to move back to more, more, more normality. And steps are going to have to be agreed and taken with regards to, you know, the matters you raise. I mean, some of them are quite expensive. As you know, we've just come out of a really difficult negotiation, on the edge of a financial cliff edge that we have, haven't been able to delete and a lot of extra, or denote a lot of extra resource towards it. But yeah, you're right, I would like to see more homeworking. I would like to see our fleet comprised of electric vehicles. I would like to see more insulation in our buildings and more energy-saving measures. And there are lots of things that we want to see. And I would like to think that when we make a decision, we do always look at the, at the at the sort of angle from climate change and that agenda. And, you know, I mean, things like LED lighting is really good to do, but it's expensive. We don't have lots of money at the moment to change all our lighting. We don't have lots of money at the moment to change all our lighting systems. But we do look in the estate's function of, for example, you know, the refurbishment of the, of leak wooden. We're trying to make sure that we get new boilers that are more efficient and all those sorts of things. We want to make sure that the listed building is not only maintained as a listed building, and it does give problems sometimes to putting in climate change saving measures. But we're doing everything we possibly can. I'm a chartist of air by profession. I understand this is about, and I think we can all help ourselves in doing that. But yeah, I think that's a good question, perhaps to come back to a later meeting. Dave, what's been done by the force and our office about all of this?
Thank you, Philip. Ian, I'm conscious that climate action and a report from the PCC is detailed in our work plan, which we'll look at Agenda Item Number Seven, sorry, Number Eight. So are you happy to continue to challenge the PCC on his response? And we're obviously looking for a thorough and informative report back when we get to twenty twenty-one on the force's position? Yeah, okay, thank you. Andy, I've got you showing your hand still. Is there an unresolved item?
No, sorry, just forgot to lower it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Right, can I just ask if anybody's got any more questions about the Covid nineteen supplement to the Police and Crime Plan? No, thank you very much indeed. Right, that moves us on to Agenda Item Number Four. Oh, we're flying through the agenda. And it gives me great pleasure to welcome Mr John Anderson. John, I am sorry you've had to wait so long and you've sat and you've sat very still and listened to all this. So thank you very much indeed. And the floor is yours, my friend.
Okay, thank you, Mr Chairman, and certainly it's been an interesting view on what the panel, you know, covers and how it scrutinises the Commissioner. So actually, it's been very useful. So, and thank you for the invitation to speak today about the possibility of closer working relations arrangements between the Police and Crime Panel and the Joint Audit and Standards Committee. I'm going to briefly tell you about the purpose and work of the committee, highlights the areas where the work of the Police and Crime Panel is already reflected in the reports the committee sees as part of its governance oversight role.
Is Deborah there? Hi, Deborah. Didn't say hello. I saw your card. I've been in my hutch.
Philip, you're broadcasting, everybody. I think he's on mute. John, can you mute Philip, please?
Yes, I just have.
Thank you. John, sorry, carry on, please. Now you're muted, John. You've muted yourself, Meg.
How's that? Okay. Right, sorry, I'll stop really again. Right, I'm going to briefly tell you about the purpose and work of the Joint Audit and Standards Committee, highlights some areas where the work of the panel is already reflected in the reports the committee sees as part of its governance oversight role, covers some of the similarities in the conduct and work of the two bodies, then suggests some areas where there could be clearer visibility of each committee's work by the other and perhaps closer working arrangements and how this could be achieved. Then firstly, purpose and work of the Joint Order and Standards Committee. The committee is a key component of the Warwickshire Police and Crime Commissioners and Chief Constable's responsibility for corporate governance. It provides an independent and high-level focus on the audit, assurance and reported arrangements in place. These underpin good governance, financial reporting, standards and ethics. To support the committee, regular briefings are provided by the Commissioner, Chief Constable and their senior staff on the current risks and issues of concern and how they're being addressed. Through the committee's review of various regular reports at its quarterly meetings, the committee provides independent advice and recommendations to the Commissioner and Chief Constable. These cover the adequacy and effectiveness of the governance frameworks, processes and assurance, risk management and internal control frameworks, financial reporting, ethics and standards. They help ensure efficient and effective internal and external audit and assurance arrangements are in place and compliance with standards, ethics and policies. The committee receives quarterly reports from management, Her Majesty's Inspector of Crime and Fire and Rescue Services, external and internal audit, as well as regular briefings and presentations on current risks and issues of serious concern. These reports cover the annual financial statements and governance reports, external and internal auditors' work plans, progress and opinions, treasury strategy and management, the risk registers maintained by the Commissioner and Chief Constable's teams and related controls and mitigations, standards, for example, deep sampling complaints, ethics, covering the embedding, the code of ethics into policing, and finally, the Warwickshire Assurance Board and False Crime and Incident Registrials' work plan audits and assurance. This covers a range of compliance and improvement issues and is aimed to assess compliance and bring about improvements in such areas as crime, data integrity and compliance with Home Office accounting rules, which you're probably familiar with. Now, moving on to some areas where the work of the panel is reflected in the reports of the committee. Some of the key risks reported in the detailed risk registers have included separation of the alliance, as Philip's already mentioned this morning, health and wellbeing, investigations and standards, detective capacity and capability and financial impacts, for example, not achieving the medium-term financial plan and failing to manage finances effectively. Now, these risks may be familiar to you and your two committees in covering performance and finance. Your scrutiny work is certainly mentioned as actions taken or in progress to mitigate these risks in the risk registers. They're also covered by the Commissioner in the reports he provides to you on how he is delivering the Police and Crime Panel and obviously been mentioned this morning already. In addition, your work is mentioned in the annual governance statement, which covers extensively the Police and Crime Plan and how this is delivered. This document, which sits alongside the annual financial statements, sets out the seven core principles defined by SIFRA, the Chartered Institute for Public Finance and Accountancy, for delivering good governance and how these should be adhered to. It includes, for example, ensuring openness and comprehensive stakeholder engagement and determining interventions necessary to optimise the achievement intended outcomes. This covers the Commissioner's decisions, actions and performance in delivering the objectives contained in the Police and Crime Plan and consultation about the precept. So already for the committee, there is some visibility of the work of the Police and Crime Panel. However, this may not be the case for the panel having sight of the work of the Joint Audit and Standards Committee. Now, there are similarities in the conduct of the work of the two bodies, excuse me. While they have different roles, the conduct of the work is very similar, with each committee having statements of purpose in terms of reference, an annual work plan setting out the work they undertake. They receive regular briefings and reports, have agendas and minutes of meetings, an annual report on the work conducted during the year. The one area where the two committees or two bodies may differ is in respect to the two subcommittees of the panel which have responsibility for performance and finance. These committees undertake investigations into specific areas and issue reports and findings with recommendations for further development. The committee has no equivalent and I don't really see the need for this being or these being established. We can call on management, internal audit or external audit to undertake an investigation if one is considered necessary. In contrast, though, committee members do work closely out of the committee with some management teams, internal and external audit to aid communication and governance development. Now, moving on to, you know, greater visibility for each body and closer working arrangements. To help with this, even though the work of the two committees is available on the Commissioner's website, which frankly, I think is very good, I would suggest initially consideration of five possible items. Firstly, sharing each committee's annual work plan and report, agendas and minutes, and these can be provided as briefing documents in our regular meeting packs. For the committee members, I'll be suggesting they also regularly read the Commissioner's report to your committee, as this I found very helpful with so much happening at present. Also, the reports of your subcommittees, as these certainly provide substance to the issue being covered compared to the rather dry audit and assurance reports the Joint Audit and Standards Committee routinely receives. But that's not meant as any criticism of the report writers, it's just the nature of the beast, which I've been long familiar with. Next, for the panel members, you may welcome a briefing on the annual governance statement. Your work is certainly mentioned extensively in that. Then, for the two chairs, to say meet half yearly to discuss any common issues. And then finally, for a member of each panel or committee, say by rotation, to attend the other bodies' meetings and provide feedback for their fellow members. Now, although brief, I hope this helps with your understanding of the Joint Audit and Standards Committee and areas where the two bodies could possibly work together. I see this as an evolving issue and it's taken forward with assistance all with helping the Commissioner and Chief Constable and their teams and for us to better understand policing and each other's roles and work. So thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions. And Commissioner and Sarah, if you'd like to add anything to that, please do.
John, absolutely fantastic. Thank you. Before I throw it open then, Philip, would you like to say anything? Or Sarah, would you like to say anything before we throw it open to members?
Well, Sarah may well, my name was mentioned first. I hope that gives an understanding of what the Audit and Standards Committee do. And some of the questions I've had this morning are about finance. Some of them have been about ethics. And John didn't mention that they do have a system whereby they go into our Police Standards Department and do some checks. And actually, one of those things, John, I think they could probably look at in the future is, is there a disproportionate amount of blame matters coming up and that sort of thing could very much help. But I think John's explained it very well. It's up to you two committees to decide how you work together, not for me. But I absolutely need the challenge you both provide. Have you got anything to add, Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Philip, and thank you, Chair. John, that was a really helpful summary. I thought it was really detailed. So excellent, and hopefully the committee, the panel found that useful. The only thing I just want to add is that the new committee is a Warwickshire-only committee. So it was established around November sort of time when the alliance sort of ended in October. So because, of course, it was formally joint with West Mercia across the PCC and the chief. So we've got a new committee that is a combination of transpiring members, and John was one of those, and new members as well. So we've got a developed work programme for the committee and we've got a training programme as well that we're looking to work with them on and provide information on. So I just wanted to update you in terms of that, and that may be helpful to the rest of the panel too.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Members, does anybody have any questions for John or any statements on the basis of what John has told us? No, I think everybody is completely in support. I've got Ian Davison flagging. Ian?
Yes, can I just say two things? Does that mean the word joint should go from what Sarah's said? And then the other is really to you, Chair, Dave, whether the suggestions John said we should try, have a go at them, about, well, all his recommendations for working closer together, whether we agree with those or not. I can't say I fully understood it, but thank you very much, and it seems well worth a go. That will be my view on that.
Thank you, Ian. Sarah, do you want to just pick up the issue about the title joint?
Yes, sorry, if I could. I suppose before, so under the alliance arrangements, it was a joint, joint committee because it was joint across Warwickshire and West Mercia and the PCC and the Chief Constable. Now it remains just a joint committee across Warwickshire, but the Chief Constable and the PCC. So I think joint is still relevant. I hope that helps.
Okay, but it's now that function as opposed to geography?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and I think that's a really important point, isn't it? John, before I come back to you to offer you the floor to tidy up anything, I think your offer of the five or the six issues is fantastically generous. The more I learn, and obviously, I'm sorry, I didn't know about the existence of the Joint Standards Committee before, but my personal view is everything we do is completely intertwined, albeit we come from a different position of authority and a different function. I totally agree with the issue about sharing the work plans. I totally agree with the issue about the joint nature of the Commissioner's report and our own scrutiny. And I think your offer for me and you to meet twice yearly is spot on. And I would ask that we have our first meeting as the preparations are done for consideration around the precept. Because, as you know, in February, the panel votes on the police precept. So if we could have a meeting sometime October, November to talk through some of the issues that would help our consideration around voting for the precept, then that would be good. And I think your offer to have representatives at the meeting is really a really good one. And I'd encourage all of our members to think about how we move forward and we take upon your offer. John, have you got anything else that you'd like to say?
Am I unmuted? Can you hear me? Yeah. Firstly, just to thank Philip and Sarah for their comments, and particularly Sarah for, you know, filling in about the recent history of the committee. Yes, I was on the previous alliance committee and was, well, very pleased to come to the Warwickshire side and have been very impressed with the team. And in fact, with you all today, it's been a very positive change for the committee joining, you know, or becoming a sole Warwickshire committee. And certainly, thanks to Sarah, recently, we've been communicating quite a bit over various issues. And she's been very helpful. And also, thanks to John Cole for setting us up today. So, yes, very good to see you in kind of scrutiny mode. And it really adds, you know, meat to the bone for myself and the committee. So thank you very much.
Okay, well, fabulous. I'll set an action then for John to work with me, that's John Cole, to work with me, you, John Anderson and myself, to put out some, a brief agreement that we can share with the PCC and the Chief Constable about how we see ourselves operating in unison. And just do some lines of engagement in there, basically, to make sure we all stick to our lawful roles and keep everything so as it's constructive. Great, so John, thank you very much indeed. Would you care to stay for the rest of the meeting?
I'll stay for a while and see how, you know, how you progress. Just one further thing, I should have obviously sent a copy of my kind of words in advance. What I will do is I'll send them to John, so you know, you've got it kind of in hard copy. And you can, you know, then have that for the record. So, but yes, I should have, sorry, I should have sent that to you, you know, for the actual meeting. It didn't, being virtual, it didn't occur to me, so.
Never take away the element of surprise and.
So I'll pick up on it anyway. Okay.
Thank you for that. Right, colleagues, can we move to Agenda Item Number Five? And I know Maggie was dying to get into Agenda Item Number Five with her question, which is the review of the Police and Crime Commissioner's funding of substance misuse. Now, Bob, you are going to present this report.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me? Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, the Performance and Planning Working Group has undertaken this review and you have the report in front of you. The group has routinely looked at the force's quarterly performance reports for quite some time now. But we also wanted to look. to look at some other aspects of the Commissioner's wider role not specifically just with the force and also we wanted to take some issues and look at them in greater detail because the working the Performance Planning Group always has a busy agenda so obviously in that context it's difficult how deep you can go into any one issue but that's really the background of why we wanted to look at some issues in this way and we chose the Commissioner's funding of services related to drugs and alcohol as the first area of review because of the obvious links between substance issues and crime and criminality and this was identified himself by the Commissioner back in his Police and Crime Plan the review took place between April and November last year I'm sorry that it's taken a while to come back to you with a report but I think it was because we thought we were going into a purder period and then because of the pandemic has delayed us having a chance to get this on the agenda but you have it now the key activities undertaken by the review were to meet with those organisations who are commissioned by the Commissioner and these were CGL who received £150,000 last year for services for adult offenders Compass who received £35,000 for services targeted at young people and the Youth Justice Service who received £40,000 for engaging in education work amongst young substance misuse users and we also met with another with a variety of partners and other stakeholders officers from the County Council from public health and we met with councillor Kaborne in his role as portfolio holder for adult social care and health we met with the Chief Executive of Carver staff from the National Probation Officer from the National Probation Office and with the Lead Policy Officer who's with us now Zeben from the Commissioner's Office you'll see the recommendations that we've made in the front cover of the report if I just draw attention to a couple of points first of all the larger providers those who were in receipt of the majority of the funding were very pleased that the Commissioner has moved from a grant aiding to a commissioning model I believe it's a two-year contract at the moment but that gives them greater security means they don't have to go through the time consuming annual application for grant process and they are much happier with the commissioning model they would prefer the contracts to be longer which they may well be in the future I believe but they do much prefer the model which the Commissioner's Office is using at the moment as well as those who receive substantial funding in a on a commissioned basis there are smaller organisations receiving grants the nature of those organisations the level of funding suggests to us to the to the working group that it's still appropriate to use the grant aid model for those organisations from everyone we met we found very positive feedback about their relationship with Commissioners the Commissioner's Office and with the Policy Officer in particular Zainab was singled out for praise as somebody who they respected and found very good to work with they thought they thought in general that the pressures on them were understand understood by the Commissioner and they found their relationship was constructive and obviously that was good to hear Talking about the partnerships one of the key partnerships for the Commissioner is the Health and Wellbeing Board which is obviously a valuable forum for cooperation between key partners but there's a view that perhaps it was very strategic and not able to address some of the more practical issues relating to those who are the sharp end of working with substance misuse users so that's something referred to the report that might lead to some thought in the future about this whether there is a need for some other group to meet on a more practical level with those people who are working with substance misuse users One of the other issues that came up and I think to many of us one of the most important things that we came across was the instance of off-rolling I confess I've not even even heard of the expression before this review but it refers to youngsters who are mainly secondary school pupils who are not attending school and for various reasons the school is allowing them not to attend school for many of them this means they're roaming the streets and potentially coming into contact with county line drug operations for example and there seemed to be a considerable risk to many young people because of this we don't have educational authorities as we used to so this will be quite difficult to issue to address having to work with academy principals for example where it does seem to be us one to one where perhaps the Commissioner could be taking the lead in drawing together those people who would be concerned about off-rolling to see if it can be addressed and see if it can reduce youngsters being put in danger of being recruited by criminals and drug operations in particular I think it's just worth mentioning the context in which we undertook this review obviously this took place last year where the government was coming to an end of a long period of austerity lots of cuts to all the stakeholders on this issue everybody's short of money there's obviously unmet need if there was additional funding things like prisoners on release for example there's a shortage of services in that respect but in general we found that the relationship between those delivering these services and the Commissioner's offices was very positive they all valued the support that they received from the Commissioner's Office and as a scrutiny exercise I'm sure that we could report that the money is being spent effectively and being monitored appropriately So I think that's all I've got to say councillor Davies and Andy Davies are with us now and they were both members of the working group I'm not sure if they'd like to to add to that
Thank you Bob Andy Nicola before we go to the PCC have you got anything to add
Just just from me Chair and just to say actually just to echo Bob's point about how positive everyone was when we went around to see all of the partners there was a real degree of they felt positive engagement with the Commissioner's Office which was really pleasing to hear and I'm quite pleased that we've actually built up a recommendation around building some of our wider findings from the report into the next Police and Crime Plan
Thank you Nicola anything to add before we listen to Philip
No I'll come back at the close and I'd like to move the recommendations but at the end of the discussion thank you
Okay thank you indeed Philip I don't know whether you've seen this report prior to today but it's it's clearly a substantial piece of work which has been given much consideration not only by the panel members by a number of people from external organisations who have contributed it is a fantastic piece of work would you like to make a comment or would you like to come back to us at a later day
Now I'll just make an initial comment I'd like to thank you know particularly Bob Andy and Nicola for doing this work I think we can shine a light on this as a really good bit of work as to how a panel can not only hold a Commissioner to account but can actually put forward some sensible you know important suggestions so the recommendations I think it's absolutely right and any report the recommendations at the front by the way I saw it about a week ago same probably the same as rest of the panel some very good points made we are looking at recommissioning the you know substance misuse misuse services the current contract runs out in April 2021 so that is something we're going to be looking at over the next few months the point about off-rolling and school absenteeism is really important and has a big big effect on this on this particular agenda you suggested Bob that possibly we could take a bit of a leading role about a year ago I chaired a meeting of 14 heads of academies in the north of Warwickshire and we talked specifically about drugs and drugs misuse so there is some quite good work going on in the background but I think it could probably be made a little bit more formal but I welcome the report and I welcome its suggestions and recommendations and of course we should be looking at those seriously and whether it's me or someone else who writes the next Police and Crime Plan I think they would be wise to look at this report before finishing that plan
Thank you Andy Davies yeah I can see you've got your hand up
Sorry that's me not taking it down again sorry Chair
Okay colleagues I've got Nicola and I've got Bob but Bob do you want to come back on anything that the
If it was rounding off this agenda item Chair just to credit councillor Dermix who was also involved in this review he's no longer on the panel but he was very much involved in this and also just to thank the council for the support from officers initially it was Tom Colgan who supported us and supported us very very well he left a comparatively short notice and John Cole stepped into his shoes admirably and has done an excellent absolutely excellent job as I think you can see from the report itself but thanks very much to John for his support
Okay thank you Maggie I can see your hand up You've got to have to say your hand up Okay thank you very much indeed well John you John Cole yet more praise today my goodness we're gonna have to give you a wage rise without any doubt Nicola you have a statement
Yeah I'd like to really move the seven recommendations and ask the panel panel endorse those recommendations the whole in-depth scrutiny that we undertook chaired by Bob was a real pleasure to take part in and it was great to dive deeper into a real issue that has an impact on people across Warwickshire and to have that constructive engagement with different partners and different organisations as we undertook that work and I'm pleased that the Commissioner is welcoming those recommendations as constructive which was our full intention was to use our time to invest in something which could have a constructive impact so I hope the Commissioner will look in depth at those seven recommendations consider them and perhaps come back with a response to the panel before September and as we've all highlighted really the importance of that recommendation number five about the potential impact of off-rolling and young people being exposed to the world of drugs and alcohol and potentially criminality as a result of that so on that note I'd like to propose that the panel accepts those seven recommendations
Okay thank you I've got your proposal there I've got obviously I know that Maggie you were going to second this I've got Zen Zainab signaling that she'd like to say something
Thank you Chair just wanted to say thank you to Bob and all of those involved in putting together this report I lead for Philip on drugs and alcohol and I think it was actually really useful for our office to have a consolidated wider overview because obviously we are sort of in the weeds of everything in terms of commissioning and trying to make the function of the services as smooth as possible so I managed those two contracts for the adult substance misuse service and the children young people substance misuse service and certainly the recommendations I mean the report was produced some time ago so we've had some time I know Philip's only seen it recently but it was presented to Neil Hewson and myself some months ago and we've had some time to have a look at the recommendations which I thought were really helpful and particularly around some of the issues raised around the grant funding process as well as the considerations around the length of the contracts as well as Philip has said the contracts run until April 2021 so it's certainly very timely for us to consider those in our recommissioning process as well so I'm sure Philip will be happy to come back to the panel with a response to the recommendations
Thank you Zainab but I mean I just using my Chair's authority if you don't mind while the the panel certainly do fully support all seven recommendations but when we've discussed this report previously in the Performance Group and also this morning recommendation five really does stand out as a challenge to us about this whole issue of off-rolling the complexity about how the Commissioner's Office and commissioning aid commissioned agencies would engage with academy status schools because if we are talking about actually getting into the nub of recruitment for supply and recruitment for use and future clients into treatment services we've got to get in and get five cracked and I think that the support of the PCC's office to help the educational authority and to help the education trusts start taking this issue seriously would be fantastic so Maggie I hope I haven't stolen your turn because you were seconding
Yes I am second I will second it and I wholeheartedly support everything that you've said and everybody else I mean we are in a very unique position at the moment to actually sort of do that collaborative working and I think you know Philip you are well placed to actually lead that so we look forward to that opportunity in terms of particularly around the contracting and addressing our concerns around recommendation five thank you
Thank you very much Philip just as a mark of our process we don't usually do the formality of a motion being proposed and then a second and then and then a vote to pass a resolution but the panel has felt that the report is so important that we will formalise the meeting structure today it's a small thing but it is about just helping to stress the panel's total support for the seven recommendations that are there so so colleagues can I can I ask everybody to show those in favour of the recommendations that are outlined one to seven and to push on five Thank you very much indeed I've got everybody there that's unanimous John Cole so if we can include a minute then please show unanimous vote and and let's certainly have a review on our work plan going forward with this thank you members is that done now on on the on the recommendation can we move on to agenda item and he said quickly looking at his papers the agenda item number six which is the recruitment of the new panel member Jane do you want to give us a quick update obviously we we know that Bobby is going to be leaving the panel in December and it's far too early to talk about what a fantastic bloke he is What's the plan Jane what's the plan
Thank you Chair I've got a draft information pack which I will circulate to members of the panel it would be really useful today if perhaps the panel could indicate three or four members that would be willing to sit on the interview panel and because I can start to arrange some potential available dates in terms of putting the information out I would aim to do that by July and we have quite a long period for people to come forward I think with a view perhaps to having interviews in September or thereabouts
Okay thank you can I can I ask then that John Cole puts an email out to members asking if anybody would like to be on the panel and we're proposing Jane are we proposing three or four members on the panel
Yes I think if you have more than that it becomes more like an interrogation for individuals who may not be used to quite operating in this arena so I think that would be quite
Three members on the panel and John will do the email say if any members would like to take part on that panel that'll be great and let's get the whole process up and running Any more on agenda item number six recruitment of a new panel member
Yes Chair sorry yeah yeah just to ask given the fact that there is not a lot of colour in terms of our panel members and we have no representation from the bank community at all could I ask that during the recruitment process that we work with organisations like GIP to look at how we might you know spread the net wider to ensure that we are more inclusive in terms of the recruitment process please and also this is a bit naughty but is it possible that we could even think about extending our own recruitment process to include someone external from the community
Just sorry Jane just clarify that your last point then so you're thinking somebody external from the Warwickshire community
Yeah
Yeah interesting I don't I don't know Jane we'll come back to you in a minute I've got Peter Gilbert who's signaling you'd like to speak as well
I was going to reiterate the point that Maggie made about making sure we publicise this place widely and try and encourage people from all walks of our community to get involved however I don't agree with it being external to Warwickshire this is a Warwickshire panel but I certainly think we should make sure this is a representative panel of the county
Fabulous thank you Peter Jane anything to tidy up on the on the comments that have been made
No I'm obviously happy to take forward the panel's suggestion about trying to access the BMA communities and you know it's in at the end of the day it's your process and your choice So happy to take those things on board
Fabulous thank you then well if you could please take upon on Maggie's suggestion that we need to make sure that we do advertise this role in all areas to make sure that it is accessible and it is accessible and that we get a proper representation. Because if we are saying that Warwickshire is a 7% mixed community, well, we are without doubt short of at least one, if not more members, if we were to be truly effective with our community. Peter, I've got your hand up again. Is that, is that one that you haven't taken down, or is it a new one?
I wasn't aware I could take it down, Chair. I didn't realise I've got so much power. How do you do that?
You click on it again.
Oh, how interesting. There we go. Sorry.
You're living the dream now, mate. That hand's going up and down like I don't know what.
It's my keep fit regime. It's because I'm smoking.
At least it's not drinking at half past 12. So, right, anyway, colleagues, moving on to agenda item number eight. The work programme, colleagues, the work programme's in front of you. Can I take it as read before we move on to dates of next meeting? Thank you very much indeed. Dates of next meeting, colleagues, dates of the next meeting are in front of you. 24th of September is the next time we come together. I wonder whether we'll be in person or whether we'll be sitting in our respective homes. I don't know. Interesting. Agenda item number 10. Does anybody have any urgent items before we move into excluding press and public? No, thank you much indeed. Jane, I understand that even though there are no press and public, I still have to read this out, don't I? I think I do anyway. Right.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. So panel members, can I agree that you, you, you agree, can I ask rather, that you agree the following motion? So as we can move into closed session. And the motion is that members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below on our agenda, on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of Schedule 12A of Part One of the Local Government Act.